Call the meeting to order. Start off by roll call. Bob Sheehan? Here. William Kamis?
Here.
Rob Sheldon?
Here.
Jason Smigle?
Here.
Jim Trampke? Here. All right, we have some minutes to approve.
You should have the last meeting minutes. I don't know if Kathy made copies, but that's...
I'm not seeing them.
Monday, November 23rd.
Does everybody review them?
I have.
I have. Okay. All right then.
I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, November 23rd, 2020 Planning Board Minutes, Meeting Minutes, as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Motion carries. We can't open the other meeting until 5:05.
We've got the A and R on Easton Street, Jim. We can do that.
Does everybody review the plans?
I have.
I have.
I have.
Everybody has. Is the applicant on line?
I just don't know what's going on. I thought she was gonna be on the call today, according to Kathy, but maybe she's not quite here yet. But need somebody to me what is going on with this.
Uh, the best I can figure out is Ms. Camiga put her driveway where it says, uh, "Existing gravel driveway" in on a piece of property that wasn't necessarily hers. I don't know if it was or wasn't. So they ended up rearranging the lot lines for lot five... Oh, wait a minute, let's see. Lot three, four, five, and six. The dotted lines are the old lot lines. And, uh, they just reconfigured the lots that, uh, I have no issue with. Everything meets what is expected.
So where was the driveway in question? On which lot?
Uh, well, I guess it... I'm not sure if it was old lot four, where it says, "Existing gravel driveway," Lil.
Hmm, yep.
Okay.
That's in lot...
And you s... What's that?
That's under lot three, right now.
It i- it is now, but previously, before they did this realignment or, um, re-division of the property, it was on a different lot.
Lot four, maybe?
Yeah. My best guess.
Do we want to guess at this, or do we want to wait until we can ask and get definite answers?
Myself personally, I am all fine with this. I don't see, I don't see the necessity to wait. However, if the board chooses to wait until, uh, uh, either Ms. Camiga or Leo Fugler comes online, that's, that's fine.
No, I'm good with it. Going all the old lot lines and then the new ones, so it basically they recreated four new building lots.
Right.
And there was four before, it's just that they've all been reconfigured.
Correct.
So every lot, three, four, five, and six was touched?
Yes.
Okay, I see the check received was for 500, so that works.
Yep.
There's no other discussion. I'll enter the motion.
Well, just a quick question.
Sure.
Slots five access, 40 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Tiny, tiny numbers. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R submitted by... Or the A and R that was prepared for Windcrest Properties LLC on Easton Street by Harold L. Eaton and Associates. Uh, dated, where's the date? December 15th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Motion carries.
Well, I, I do understand that some of us are gonna have to go down to Town Hall to sign these with Kathy. What are the, is the Town Hall open on Thursday? Do you know?
This Thursday?
Yes, day before Christmas.
Let me text Kathy and find out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see anything on this plan that states that we're not... I'm gonna stamp it with our stamp.
Okay.
Okay, Kathy says they are open.
Okay. Obviously, if we can get down there sooner, that's fine too, but...
Isn't that up in the upper left-hand corner, Jim? It's not on the plans you've got there?
Yeah, it doesn't... It doesn't state what we typically... Planning Board endorsement under the subdivision control law should not be construed by the way endorsement or approval of a zoning requirement. But a buildable building lot is what our state's...
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna put that here as well. Actually, it is right here. It's down on the notes. That's all good.
All right.
Okay, I suppose I'll take, I'll entertain the close, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for Steve Marion, 121 West State Street. And we will resume our regular meeting after we exit the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Bob?
This conference will now be recorded.
Lillian?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Meeting is is closed. Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing for Steve Marion's site plan approval December 21st at 5:14. In accordance with the, in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, the Grandby Planning will hold a virtual public hearing using go-to meeting on December 21st at 5:05 PM. The nature of the hearing is to constitute petition of properties plus LLC applicant and owner seeking a site plan approval under 5.13 Business Estate Lots of the Grandby zoning bylaws for a metal building that would be used for storage of business and company property on Lot 1 at 121 West State Street, Grandby, Mass.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Uh, at our last meeting, I had recused myself because I had worked for Mr. Marion on this property. Uh, and then another member of the board had to recuse himself as well because he is a direct abutter to this property. Uh, I spoke with the Ethics Commission, the attorney of the day, on December 3rd, 2020. And she advised me that she felt that there was no conflict of interest. However, I did have to fill out a form. Title of the form is Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest as required by General Law C 268A. This is a Form 23B3, which I did, I did fill it out. I signed it. And basically, what it says is, "Taking into account the effects, in into account the facts that I have disclosed above, I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and fairly." This was filed with the town clerk and time stamped on December 4th, 2020 at 9:56 AM." So...
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
And at this point, this is Jason Smigle here, and I'm gonna recuse myself in this conversation.
Okay, thank you. duly noted. Lillian, you caught that?
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, is the applicant on?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
I see. Could you present to the, to the board your plans?
Sure. Just to recap, I know we had our previous, just a preliminary meeting a couple of weeks back, but I brought forward plans to put up a metal building in Lot 1. It was a building lot.
And I asked him what his problem was with the drainage, and he said he was concerned that the land, there was no drainage design on the site plan. And he just doesn't want another issue like Dollar General coming through after the fact to bite us, especially when we add in parking spaces that'll move the water in.
Well, it's, it's all impervious right now, so... And there's, there's no, um... There's no plan here for paving.
But still, you're adding more trucks, and I think we should get this right first time around.
If I can just intervene, the previous, the current building that's already there has all drainage, and there's already a culvert that's probably draining through, preventing any issue from the street. That was all done prior with the first building. This building's set back much farther. And everything's already swelled and preventing any issue with the highway or state, because there's clear cut drainage going underneath the roadway already.
That's not showing on the plan.
Now, that's because it's on the existing building lot from Lot 2, which is the front, that Lot 2, which is the main building, is the one that would really be any effect of the roadway.
But aren't you putting vehicles, potentially parking them behind the new building?
There'd be no more vehicles that are already currently there at the main lot. Most of the parking, everything's all the front building. This is storage in the back there for my equipment. So it's essentially the same setup. I mean, there's still plenty of vehicles and everything that's already been designed from the front lot that park there on a normal basis.
I still would like to see them on the plan, just to avoid another Dollar General.
Would the current plan that's on file from the front lot be sufficient? Because that one is everything that's butting the street.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but I think not because you're adding a building, and we need to know what it would be like with the building on there.
The, with regards to stormwater, any new impervious surface, which would be the foundation of the building, those calculations would be for any new surface, so it isn't quite sufficient based on the current building that's there for the footprint of that building to account for the new impervious surface of the 4,998 square feet that's going to be built with the metal building.
So you guys are saying they'd rather me have the the current building's plans added onto here to show where the drainage is?
Yeah, Ken, do you think it'll be enough?
My biggest concern here is with, like, you know, we went through with conservation, there was all the the discussion of it not being in a buffer zone or zero point. I don't know if the terminology is correct, that no point source discharge area is what was determined from all the, you know, when we, I applied with the conservation, and they did all these calculations, and, you know, I thought conservation was the area that covered this portion of it. And they approved it through all the paperwork that we provided to them. I was under the impression that that was the bigger, and I understand there's a whole other side of it, but I feel like that was all discussed in the other portion of the permit process.
But it's not on the plans that we have.
Correct, and I think it's a, I think the main reason was because it's an estate lot. We're thinking it wasn't affecting it the same way because of the no point source discharge and all that other lingo that they were referring to, and it being in the estate lot, not the lot that's up on the street.
Then that should be noted on the plans. Where everything's going to be draining to.
I guess. I mean, I, this is the first I heard of it, I guess.
I'm looking at the elevation of building feet and the board here. The, the building is sloped to the rear of the lot. Is that correct?
Yeah. That's correct.
Trying to read elevations here. Small plane.
Mr. Marion, the Conservation Commission issued an approval. Was it a negative determination? Or was it a order of conditions?
Oh, boy. They gave me an approval. I'm trying to figure out what the exact terminology was. They just, they reviewed all the prints, discussed it, and I don't know the exact terminology that they gave, gave for it. What were the two ones you're asking me again?
So it was a negative determination for a, I always forget the acronym, but it's either that, or it was an order of conditions which allowed you to move forward with your construction on the Conservation Commission's per, over the Conservation Commission's purview. Then there's the negative determination of, um... Uh, what is it? Negative determination. It's called an RDA, which is a request for determination ability.
Yeah.
And then the Conservation Commission would do its analysis and then basically make a negative determination based on what you presented to them. I think if there was a review of stormwater and, and you know, and those documents are available, then I think that could be helpful to the board, so that, you know, if there were a different set of plans which, which were drawn or submitted to them with regards to stormwater, that could be helpful to the board to at least address the, the comment made by the Department of Public Works.
Yeah, so from my understanding, well, I know that the term RDA was what was filed. And I apologize because I don't have the exact, you know, concept. I was just kinda going through the motions like I am with you guys. But the, the conservation point of it was, you know, after the people that I hired to go out there and take care of it, all the measurements and data that they needed. And I know there was quite, there was a lot of discussion about the current runoff that's set up, and that it's pretty elaborate to begin with, with the current building and how there's culverts and everything, as compared to, you're talking about that other situation. There was a new building that was, there was nothing existing in there. So they're just putting it alongside the roadway. Here, there's already a current building with elaborate stormwater runoff system determined from years ago. So I think that was part of their determination. I don't have specifics on that. I just know that every, you know, I think it's a little different because it's, and I, and I understand where you guys are coming from, but it's a little different because it's the estate lot where they, I guess you're looking at everything on the streets, already been done up by the streetway. And I guess it's all new to everybody, right? Because this is the commercial estate lot that has just recently been approved, and I believe the first one going up in town. But yes, it was an RDA through conservation. I mean, I can get, I can get more information for you, obviously, but...
Yeah, I think based on an email from Kathy Leonard, she said that maybe the board was awaiting a note from the Conservation Commission, which would have been maybe to submit or address the, the negative determination for the RDA, which could be helpful to the board with regards to this question about stormwater. So, I mean, I think that...
Well, Ken, I, I think if the Board of Health had any issue with it, they would have noted it in their letter to the Select Board slash Planning Board dated December 10th. I mean, they, they, they clearly said Board of Health has no issue with this plan. So if there was any issues with conservation, we would have heard from them as well.
Jim, the email from Kathy said, "I spoke with Bill Shaheen of the Conservation Commission, and he said they did not look at the drainage, as they felt the Highway Department would be addressing it." I think it was a, and I don't think, I think it was miscommunication between the Highway and these guys as to who was really supposed to do it. But, um, needless to say, the plans for water that were already put in there at the very beginning from the other building, we, the rules have since changed.
However, I do understand what you're saying, Lil. As I'm looking at the proposed new grading of this area around the building, As I'm looking at the proposed new grading of this area around the building, the grades aren't changing that much and all the new grading is coming, the contour wise, are coming back to existing grades that are already on the property that are accepting, uh, due to the contours of the property, the current sheet flow, water flow, best I can tell is all being diverted to that culvert right off of Route two oh two. Uh, and then it progresses to the east of as it's always been with the, uh, with the current, with the existing building.
But it still doesn't show it on these plans.
It doesn't show what?
Where all the, the drainage is going.
Well, it shows of, it shows the contours, it shows the existing culvert and the flow of the culvert with the arrow. I don't know how much more it could show, but
So everything's draining towards the street?
Yes.
I would think that's gonna be a big problem.
Everything currently drains towards the street.
Right, but now you're adding more to it.
So currently, it's a lot lower than street elevation, though, the, the way it's set up. I mean, i- if you walk the site, and I'm not telling you to do that, but I'm just saying, it, it, it's, it would be different if they, if the site was above the street and coming down a hill to it, but the way it's set up is not like that at all. And it's never been an issue with the current thing, uh, situation, and certainly is not gonna have any different impact. Again, I know you're, you're concerned about the Dollar General situation, but that is just completely different than what's going on here in terms of adding a new, a new building just on the side of the road, which that is a higher elevation as compared to this si- si- situation.
I still would like something in writing from somebody, some expert somehow, maybe Ed Chapdalan can put it on there saying, you know, this is all gonna come in here, there isn't gonna be any, we don't anticipate a big, uh, hundred year, more than a hundred year, cause those are coming a lot sooner these days. Flood or something coming through, where it's all gonna come out to the, onto two oh two or flood all the areas around there. Prove this the way it is, and something like that happens, it's on us.
Okay, um, are there any butters, anybody else? Steve, how difficult would it be for you to have somebody show the drainage on your point? To get somebody out there to show the edge and the, the, uh,
So I'd have to start, I don't really know where to start with that, so I I would have to start making some calls and find out who I can do, obviously, this is gonna be involved with paying someone to come out to do something that, you know, I, I would have to start making calls tomorrow, I don't really have a good answer on that, I think it's gonna hold me up just to get somebody to go out there, looking at it now, especially with the snow out there, I, to be honest with you, but
Well, Ed Chapdalan may be, may be the one that can help you the most.
Yeah, I mean, I know, obviously, I worked with him quite a bit and he, you know, there, there was a lot of terminology, like I said, that no source, point source discharge was one of the things kept, and I, maybe I'm using this in wrong terminology for it, but, you know, it's obvious that there's no issue from looking at anything, that's why it was never addressed. It's kinda throwing me a curveball here, to be honest with you. So I don't really have a straight answer, short of, I'd have to start falling around, I, obviously, it's gonna hold me up.
Well, it, it appears that we have we have concern, a member has concern about runoff and rather than to take an up and down vote, I would, I'm gonna recommend that we continue this hearing, or continue this meeting, and ask that you get ahold of a expert, we're not telling you who to use, to pr- show on the plan how the water's going to e- either be, how the, how the water's going to be, um, managed. How it's gonna flow, whether there's any type of detention area or or elevations that are clear for all members to understand that the, um, the sheet flowing that's gonna take place here.
Okay, yeah, I'll, uh, make some calls tomorrow, I don't know how, I'm not really sure how quick that works, but I'll, uh, I'll start making calls.
Okay, so now, before we close, close this out, Steve, I, I want you to hang on here. There was also some, uh, issues brought up today and concerned with parking. Now, I, you've said it more than once, the only parking is gonna be inside the building. But those concerns that down, use it for something other than the, the, the original purpose, that you show that there's some, there's area here to park. So by reading this plan for myself, I can see where you've got the grayed out area three sides.
Yep.
The we- the westerly side is a twenty-foot driveway. Or the southerly side, I guess you would call that, the westerly side is is a hundred and forty by thirty-five foot pad area cleared for gravel. In front of them. You've got a hundred and two plus feet by forty-five feet. That should satisfy parking for a building that was fully occupied as office use from what I can see here. So if anybody's got any issues with, with space for parking of additional vehicles, let's bring it up now for Steve, so that we're not sending him away on a second. Ken, Will, any, any comments?
Um, Jim, you're talking about the map that shows the, um, I'm looking at, there's no name on the map. But it shows gray areas around the building.
Correct.
So the gray areas on either side would be used for parking?
They could be, he's not showing it because he doesn't need it, he's only using it for store, for his equipment. But if there's an issue where someone see additional parking, designated parking, I think it's premature to ask for that right now, because if he showed it today and decided to use, use it for a different purpose tomorrow, that parking plan may not be sufficient. So if he doesn't need parking now, although he has room to park, I, I myself don't wanna see a parking plan.
Okay, but this gray area, say like on the backside of it, looking from the highway, is, uh, gonna be graded? One would assume?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be parked back there.
Okay.
For gravel or whatever.
Okay. So if, Jim, if later on down the road, uh, Mr. Marion decides to rent out the areas, he doesn't need it for all of his stuff, then he'll have to come back to the planning board?
He's gotta, he's gotta, he's gotta apply for so who knows what that will be, if it's, if he's renting out for storage, then maybe he needs a couple spots for parking. If he rents it out for retail or something along those lines, he'll need more parking.
Right, but that would come back later.
He has to come back for a use change.
Okay.
Right now, it's just for private use.
I'm fine with the parking now, the way it is.
But just to clarify, just general question, if I, you know, in front of the garage doors, if I have a, one of my own personal vehicles parked out there during the day, I mean, that doesn't create an issue, right, cause it's the obvious area for parking, I know you guys asked me about parking last time and I was just indicating that, that whole area there is if I pull up a car next to it, the building and parked, you know, it would be assumed where there's a parking spot. So I'm just trying to clarify, like, if I have a vehicle, my, one of my trucks parked out there during the day in the lot, that's, that's warranted, correct?
That's fine, the, the, the difference, parking for public use or parking for private use?
I got it, okay.
Following?
Yeah, so like the front building's all been approved for public use, so I parked there, okay. And just to get back to the, um, cause you get, and I'm getting a real curveball here with the, uh, the water here. You're saying that if I can, I have to call around and find someone, they, or obviously speak with some of the people that I've just recently hired to do all the paperwork and see if I can get them to write up something to say that there's a current, water runoff, correct, done correctly there, or you just need something more in detail beyond that?
A number that would like to see it, what, show it on the plan.
So the storm, the storm drain and the, and the runoff that, um, Mr. Sheen was referring to, that is on, that we're reading here, that's not suffice. And I can understand where, um, Dave DeRozers would raise the question. But I mean, if, if, obviously, re- looking at these markings, we can see what's going on here, and we know where the culvert is in the street.
I think what we wanna make sure of, Steve, or what the board has concerns about are the, the zoning bylaws regarding, uh, uh, stormwater management. And I believe that that's what Dave DeRoche also has concerns for, and, uh, I, I think that that has become a stumbling block this evening.
Uh, yeah, I understand, I just, I feel like I went through a lot of this with uh, the, the people that, you know, that, whatever, I, the correct people, and I thought that we were following the right protocol for this, so I'm just, I feel like getting this hung up over one question is, uh, I don't know. I, I feel like we've addressed this with all the other departments for this.
I think if you submitted the Conservation Commission materials, that could be helpful, um, to the board and to the town, um, maybe that would be helpful for, um, Mr. DeRoche, I'm not sure if he, you know, reviewed that, um, but if the determination and Conservation Commissions can also address storm water, um, maybe that review could be helpful to, um, DPW to, to make that determination. I think other ways that I've seen um, these questions about storm water, especially with a, a building, um, you know, knowing, knowing that there is probably a storm water, um, there's storm water, um, management already on site for the first building, for the front building, um, real, and it, it may be a letter um, from a civil engineer that suggests that, um, you know, the, the addition of this five thousand square foot building, um, which is your impervious surface, which is what would cause, you know, additional, um, water, um, that if, if, in the opinion of the civil engineer, that it didn't add to, or, or, and I'm, I'm not a, you know, a stormwater expert, but maybe the concerns that the DPW director had with regards to adding additional water to, um, the additional water that would be going, flowing to, you know, either two oh two or to your stormwater management, um, on site, that it wouldn't, or, or, you know, and as you butters, um, if, where that water would go, I think the, the civil engineer would be able to make that determination as well as if the flows would be managed based on the, 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 um, systems that are already on site and, um, I, yeah, I think that, that, that is what a civil engineer would be doing for that review, um, to determine, you know, the, the stormwater management on site.
Steve, AD may be able to provide you with something.
Who's that?
Associated Builders might be able to provide you with something pretty quick.
Yeah, I'm sure they probably can, I was just thinking that, I just wish I could have gotten that prepared for you guys before this meeting, but, uh, all right, that's all we can do at this point.
If, if I can say a couple of more things, please, um, to all my respected board members, uh, if you were to merely drive by the site, starting down at the intersection of Kellogg and Route two oh two, heading up towards the site, you'll see a, uh, a ditch along the whole side of Route two oh two there that feed, uh, feeds into a swamp. That's where all the stormwater is going to, is that swamp. And then, and I'm only bringing this up because sometimes we don't know, or we don't visualize what's happening. Also, Mr. Marion, I think it would behoove you that when we continue this meeting, that you have your, uh, professionals online with us, who would be, um, possibly more able to answer questions from, uh, either other concerned parties, the board, uh, our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission liaison, just so that they, they could probably be, uh, uh, answered in a, in a more efficient manner.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, duly noted, yeah, I would have definitely had him there if I thought this was coming up, I get
Yeah.
blindsided with this one.
Uh, the board did too, we didn't hear anything about, uh, thing from DPW until today.
We didn't hear anything from anybody until today. You know, that, that's really unfair to, to the applicant also, but we won't go there.
Is there, is there any way to, and, and this, obviously, I think I probably know the answer to this, but to have some vote subject to a, uh, some letter approving or, or in discussion from an engineer? Like beyond that, that particular issue?
I personally go ahead.
I didn't quite understand what he said, uh, Bob.
So, hey, my, my biggest issue is I'm trying to, and I understand, I, there's no doubt in my mind, this is gonna get approved eventually. I'm trying to get a foundation in before the ground freezes, there's been much discussion in trying to get this done. And what I was trying to get at is there any way that there can still be a vote based on this subject to a approval letter from some, or some letter from an engineer signing off on something like this? Cause I know, I mean, I know it's one thing for me just to say that it's, it's gonna be fine, but we know or people that actually know the property and looked at it, there's gonna be no issue with this. And the more that we wait, the longer it's gonna take me. It's gonna be until the middle of February and then that's gonna be putting me, sending me back to the springtime. I was trying, after this meeting, we were hoping to try to get something done ASAP for the foundation. And I think I can make this, get something put together by someone quick, but you know, I don't want it to, we were hoping to call the inspector by Thursday and try to set something up through a foundation put in.
Does anybody take it?
Let me ask the board this, would, would the board consider voting on approval of this site plan with, uh, outstanding circumstances, uh, to be, to be presented to the board?
No.
You would not be in favor of doing that, is that correct, Will?
That is correct.
Okay. Understood. So I guess we have to have all our ducks in a row uh, before we can go to a, uh, to a vote?
Yeah, it's a four person, four person, uh, board tonight. We need a three a majority. And, uh, I would be in favor of approving this with conditions that, uh, that a, an approved stormwater design is presented. I would be okay with that, that's.
That's essentially what I was looking for. I'm just trying to get a, I obviously will present the stuff and I can't go farther with a build if I, it doesn't happen. I'm just trying to be, get a way to, even if it's at my own risk to put a foundation in then, and then get halted, but I'm just trying to get something for the condit, and then under condi, conditions to get it squared away prior to the final, like, construction of it.
Frankly, even if we were to do that, Steve, I'm not so sure the, I can't speak for the building department, but I don't know as if they would issue a permit without full approval.
This is true too. I, I'm just kind of speaking out loud. I have no idea without talking to the building inspector either.
You, I know it's the holidays. I know you've got a, a pretty decent contractor. They could probably flip something pretty quick. If the board is willing to continue this meeting until next Monday or Tuesday, do you think you could have something before us by then?
I can make some calls right away, obviously. I, it's hard for me to give you a definitive answer. I mean, I would, I could reach out to, or, or email the board tomorrow and let you know that for sure, but I, I really don't know without starting. Obviously, when this meeting ends, I'm making some calls right now.
So well, as, as, this is what I, as proceeding.
Hang on Bob, for a minute, please.
Yep.
I'm gonna make a recommendation that we we continue this meeting until Monday or Tuesday of next week. If you have the information, great. If you don't, notify us. We will, because this is all virtual, it's not really a big deal for us to open the meeting and then continue it again. If nobody takes objection with that. I'd only, that puts you a week out on the decision, but you're not gonna get much done in a week anyway.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm fine with that.
So I don't know how the, the rest of the board goes. Bob, go ahead. You, you were starting to say something as well.
Well, what I, what I was gonna do is explain to Steve that, uh, for us to continue the public hearing, we have to have a, uh, a set date and time to continue it too. That's all I was gonna say, which you basically said.
So. Does anybody from the board in objection of doing that?
I'm fine.
So.
Yeah, Rob's fine with that.
Okay, good. So why, why don't we? Bob, why don't you make a motion to continue this, and it, with Monday or Tu, let's go with Tuesday. That way there, if there's anything that, Monday's a business day if you're still running around trying to get things done, Steve. Why don't we continue this meeting for Tuesday?
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Twenty nine, okay. At, oh, five.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to continue Mr. Marion's public hearing to Tuesday, December twenty ninth at five PM.
Do we have a second?
Rob will second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I, I have a little, just so we're all clear, the meeting's being continued. We're good with everything on the plan with the exception of showing us how you're gonna drink, how the, uh, stormwater, uh, is going to be managed on site to the, to the, uh, to the road.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Bob Sheen?
Aye.
Julian Camus?
Aye.
Rob Chauvin?
Aye.
Tim Tronkey is an aye as well. Meeting is continued. And this meeting is now closed. And the regular planning board meeting will continue. Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, Jason, I'll sign these plans for the A and R. I don't think we had anything else on the agenda, did we?
Uh, no, are we still gonna, so we're gonna meet next Tuesday just for the public hearing and then our regularly scheduled meeting is January eleventh. Plus, we have, um, tomorrow, we have a joint planning and, um, economic development committee meeting at six thirty.
Correct. That's the what time health? The six thirty though, right?
Six thirty, yes. Well. The board has, uh, the planning board has to vote to have to approve the, uh, the findings that Ken had sent to everybody. I can see heads shaking.
Yes.
Yep. I started reading it. I have not finished, but I have started.
Which, which fi, oh, the, the report.
Yes.
The, the report. I've, I've s- submitted so many reports to different communities. Yes.
Well, if we don't, so we're having a joint meeting tomorrow. And if all the that, that just got kicked out over the weekend, if I'm not correct, or not mistaken, right?
Uh, pretty much so, yeah.
So, if everybody's not, I'm sure you're gonna give your presentation tomorrow, and then if the board's not, you know, up to, up to speed on everything, we can take it up at the, uh, our next meeting.
For sure. I think it's an ongoing thing, um.
Yeah.
Um, I did want to bring something else up, um, if this is the time for that.
Well, all depends. Is it, is it planning board related?
It is planning board related, yes. Um, so I, um, received a, a, an email from Daniel Cost, who is a planner with the Westover, um, Air Force, uh, Air Reserve Base and um, there's gonna be a study coming out. It's called the ACUS, um, which again, it's an acronym that I always have to search, um, what that means. It's Air Installation Compatible Use Zone. And, um, I think we discussed this maybe a couple months ago when we were looking at the zoning amendments that you're, you're currently, you know, exploring. Um, but they, but the, the report and study are forthcoming, um, and I'll be sure to, um, so, um, the town administrator will get that, administrator will get that as he is the liaison or that he's the contact person. But, um, I did suggest, um, you, um, Jim, to also receive at least notification that the study was available. Um, and um, I'll be getting it because I, you know, that's, that's my purview at PVPC and we worked with, we, we put together the original joint land use study plan back in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. Um, but I just wanted to tell you that, that, that's forthcoming. And, um, it may provide some insights as to um, the different types of land uses that the board is exploring for, um, that location. Those properties over there.
Yeah, it sounds like the plan is good. We're, uh, as I, I've been told we'll be ca, kept informed of when the town will have a, uh, a town meeting, a full town meeting, so that we're back from there on our, our schedules to to move forward with the, the potential rezoning.
Yeah.
So that's good. That's good news.
Um, Ken, a quick question on the, um, meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
With that report, I believe that report has to be by the end of this year.
Yeah, so that is a report that's by the end of the year. Again, their, their recommendations and, um, it includes a multitude of different parties. So the planning board would presumably take, you know, take, um, if they choose to, to look at those particular regulations in the mixed use development district, um, you know, obviously the zoning board, um, or the zoning, uh, would be looked at. The other recommendations are for other town entities, um, and most of those are grants, um, for some of the other supports, but it is, um, a report that's for, for information for the town. Um, there's no adoption or anything. It's more so, um, you know, these are the identification of some of the issues with regards to uh, mixed use development in Granby and, um, some recommendations based on best practices and based on grant programs that exist to, to help support some of that development.
So the only thing we really need to vote on is accepting the report?
Yeah. Okay, I mean, the really, I, I, you don't really need to vote, um, but if the plan, if the, if it's been the practice of the board to do stuff, like, to, to vote on reports, um, yeah, cause it's not a, it's not a master plan, um, which would be the adoption of, or the approval or, you know, accepting of the plan. Um, this is a report for, for the town to use and more so the town administrator for guidance to other departments, um, and select board for guidance to departments to address, you know, some of the issues that were identified with regards to mixed use.
Okay, so, so Jim, is your understanding then that we don't need to vote on it?
Um, I think we should. If we, if we're in agreement with it.
Okay.
Vote on it and truly stand behind, I mean, at lea, at least in its, you know, entirety, we should. I mean, there's suggestions on what the town can do to go forward with. I don't think we should, you know, move it forward unless we agree with it. But and from what I, I haven't gotten through the whole thing. But, um, it looked pretty good so far. I think some of the findings were just were things that we've been talking about for years about infrastructure that.
And in general, that's, that's the case. It, it is, uh, you know, it's trying to find the resources and the, the opportunities that are out there. Obviously, the town, um, you know, may need to address the capacity to the, to do those things, but, um, you know, it's, it, it's at least in a, in a documented report that you could take to your, um, granting authorities, um, to help support that type of development and to, to look for other funding streams to, to help support that. That's really the goal.
Yep, absolutely. Well, that sounds good. We can get into that more tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything else? Okay, well, Jason and I have signed off on the plans. And, um, well, everybody can get down to town, all the to do their, their part. So with that said, um, I don't think we'll, we'll be talking all, talking some. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We got a second by Jason. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye.
Motion carries. Adjourn. Thank you, everybody.